Stanford pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 11. You have to announce we have an executive session. Thank you, Mr. Arcari. Mr. Arcari pointed out on faux pas on my part, I forgot to announce that before this evening's meeting, council did have an executive session, so the record and the minutes can reflect that. Thank you, Mr. Arcari.
You're welcome, Mr. Cozer.
Thank you. That was due to have one screw up at some point this year. Not to say that I haven't already. So now we will move for the approval of the minutes of the meeting of December 11.
So moved.
Motion of the second, any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Seven zero, Ms. Lauer. Special reports, Ms. Lauer.
Tonight, you have in attendance the state champion golf team for both men and women's team for the high school, and they're here to be honored by the council.
And we were given a wonderful handout here that explains your accomplishments, so I'm going to read this so that all the people listening at home and watching at home can understand and appreciate why we're honoring you this evening. This past October, the Peters Township Boys and Girls Golf Teams captured state championship titles in their respective sports. The girls' golf team clinched an unbeaten season by winning the program's first ever state championship by shooting the lowest team score ever in the 3A state championship. At the district level, Peters Township won its third whitt field title in the last four years. Not to be outdone, the boys' team capped off their undefeated season by winning their seventh whitt field championship and setting a new whitt field championship scoring record, then followed that up by winning their first ever PIAA state championship. In the state final, the boys shattered the Pennsylvania state scoring record with an under four par 240, 284. Congratulations to both teams. We are thrilled and can't put into words how excited we are about your accomplishments. We're going to have both teams come forth here and introduce themselves and...
And, Mr. Cozer, you have a gift that you can give them, sitting on the front desk here.
All right, well, we'll do this. Chivalry has not died here yet, so it'll be ladies first. The girls roster, I'll read it out, and then you can all come and introduce yourselves. Girls head coach, Mike Lacy, assistant coach, Scott Sussman, Ellie Benson, Gabby Katelogna, Amelia Severns, Sophia Severns, and Brooke Wawczek.
So we all get, everyone give your name and then some sort of, go around like this.
In front of the microphone.
Isn't that horrible?
Amelia Severns. Gabby Katelogna.
I do severance.
No, I do severance.
I have a problem. No, or...
For the lighting.
You've lost a bird.
My face.
Nothing changed.
Hold more, hold more.
I'd picture myself curled, say, count to three. Everybody say cheese.
One, two, three.
Cheese.
So now we got boys' team. Gentlemen, the fall's late.
Same thing, first person, of course. So your name and...
Griffin Hansberry.
Colton Lusk.
Ben Miller.
Shane Williams.
Ryan Hillebrand.
Jackson Baxter.
Chris McCatt.
Coach David Kuhn. We have a couple of boys that aren't with us this evening. Jeremy Poon, Ryan Waterson, and Nicholas Hott.
Yeah, probably. You guys are following.
We need to step up.
We need to be on the platform.
Come up in front of the lights and wires and there you go.
Not too far, we don't want to scrap.
There you go.
One, two, three.
Cheese.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I assume we're going to put up a thing on 19 or wherever?
Yeah, we're going to add it to the list of state champions.
State champions. Thank you. Whitt field champions. In the interest of fairness, I didn't list the, I didn't read off the names of the coaches of the boys' team. Head coach, David Kuhn, assistant coach, Joe DePardo, assistant coach, Jeff Chastel, and assistant coach, Brian Farrell. Thank you all for coming tonight again. Congratulations. You tell them they're welcome to stay, but...
They're smart.
Tell me what's that.
Thanks, everybody.
See you. Have a nice evening.
All right, no other special reports, correct, Mr. Lauer?
That is correct.
All right, so we'll move into audience comments. This is the section of the meeting, any member of the audience can speak for up to five minutes on a non-agenda item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak?
Who else? You can get up in.
Good evening, Mr. Rens.
Steve Rens, 838 East McMurray Road. Aside from the obvious, please stop the Frobie Farms project, I had another question for you. So recently, one of our police officers has been attacking a person online and actually causing people to attack this person online unjustly. Do we have a policy for our police officers and social media, is there?
The answer is yes, and if a person has a problem, there's also a way to file a complaint that will be investigated, and if it's found that that person has behaved in accord, not in accordance with the policies and procedures of the department, they'd be disciplined.
Okay, so it was filed today, this morning, she went to the police department, but as of seven o'clock tonight, it was still online. They haven't taken the post down.
Mr. Rens, I don't, I can't address it because I haven't seen it yet. I will guarantee you that tomorrow morning, first thing, I'll be meeting with the chief to find out what that's about.
Because it has to do with April Sloan and all that nonsense with her dog, and she's getting death threats, and he is turning the focus on another person, saying that she's just as much to blame, and, you know, totally unfounded, it's just politics. And, but now this person is getting death threats, you know, and she's totally innocent, you know, so, you know, it would be great if this was addressed, so.
One more person? Thank you, Mr. Rens. Ms. Shanner.
Good evening.
Good to see you back, Ms. Shanner.
Yeah, I know, you know what, I had other obligations on Monday nights, so I'm really sorry about that. But anyway, I have several topics I want to discuss tonight, okay? Tomorrow, you may all know, I don't know if you know, but it's the hearing for the two gentlemen who shot up on Thomas Road background Labor Day. Okay, I am going to that hearing. It is a plea hearing, so I'm hoping that, you know, sentencing does occur tomorrow so that maybe we, you know, especially the Wagners, where two shell casings were found on each side of their driveway, they can make a victim's impact statement. But what I want to note here is that during the magisterial hearing, 16 of us showed up at the magistrate's office, and it was very disappointing to me because the district attorney, Robert West, was the district attorney that day, and also the police officer, pardon?
Assistant district attorney.
Yeah, assistant district attorney, and the police officer, and please forgive me, I can't remember his name, but they both wondered why we were all there. Now, I'm being silent on purpose, okay? They wondered why we were all there. We live in this township, right? There's a shooting in the township. I should think we all should be concerned about that. And what we were told by them, why are you all here? This was just two guys who were intoxicated, shooting into the woods. Now, you tell me, from Concord to Lamp, what is it, Lamp Light or Circle there, where is their woods? There's houses behind houses. There's no woods. That was an inappropriate response, especially by the police officer. We pay his salary. You're the boss of the police, right? That's what I was told. So I, you know, I'm hoping that hearing goes well tomorrow. I'll keep you posted on that. The other thing I want to talk about is I do belong to NAACP, and I know there was an incident, now, look, I'm not going to talk, I don't know what the charge was, I think it was shoplifting, I'm not sure, but there was an incident with a police officer using the N-word with an African-American gentleman, I guess, who was trying to take something, I'm not sure what the charge was. I'm not here about that, but that's inappropriate, too.
In that particular case, that has been investigated and that has been dealt with in a disciplinary process in the...
Well, okay, yeah, and I want to know, why is that secret? Because here's the, what the, I have a copy of the letter that was sent to Mr. Gatling, okay? And it says that you cannot, because it's a personnel matter, we are prohibited by law to publicly release or discuss the investigation or the adjudication.
That is correct.
And why is that?
Well, that's on the advice of our labor attorney.
But is it the law?
It's a personnel matter, well...
I don't think it's the law.
Oh, I think it is the law, that you cannot disclose personnel matters. But I can tell you that that has gone through the disciplinary process and it's been adjudicated.
So that person was disciplined? Because that's totally unacceptable, totally unacceptable, and I should hope and think that you all think that's unacceptable also, for one of our police officers. I mean, we have been recognized as a model police force, and for that to happen is uncalled for. All right, another thing I want to talk about, and I'm going to have to talk fast, is that's trying to cross Route 19, okay, down there where you come by atrias to cross, and you can push the button. Now, am I supposed to push both of those buttons? Because, sure, the traffic stops one way, but they don't stop the other way, almost got hit, so I should think, can't you make it so that when you push the one button, traffic stops both ways?
I'll have to check that, but that's what should happen.
Yeah, it didn't happen, because this woman almost hit me, and I went like that, like, what are you doing here? And she said, oh, chill out, lady, you know, I mean, that's just not nice, you know, so you should check into that, to make that so that that stops both ways. And I don't have enough time for the other things I wanted to talk about, so I'll come back next time, January.
Thank you, Ms. Shanner. Anyone else wish to speak on a non-agenda item?
The pen just fell, do you design any?
And the pad's gone.
Oh, I'm sorry. Here, I just get there.
He's just going to sign that one. These are one, it doesn't matter. Give me your name and address.
Okay, I'm Vince Reppey, and I just want to take a real brief moment to talk about some of the growth in the community, and so I moved here 23 years ago. It's a lot different than what it is now, lots of housing developments, et cetera. And I've always been one for, hey, if you don't want somebody to develop that property, why don't you buy it? But that's not necessarily realistic with most of our incomes. So I was thinking about another way that we could potentially halt the development, and that is to basically take the large pieces of land and pay the landowner. You look at some of the farms, I think some of those people actually don't want to sell them, but they wind up with so much money, it's sometimes hard not to sell them. And it doesn't have to be the large pieces of land, like Simmons Farm, or as the gentleman mentioned, Frobie Farm. It could, you could start with something like the Clean and Green, which is like, what, 10, 12 acres, whatever that may be. So I don't want to be just somebody who just complains about development, because I'm not really against it, but how much is enough? So I would like to offer theoretic solutions. Number one, because there's obviously not enough money sitting in the kitty for us to sit there and pay Simmons Farm to not sell their land. So I came up with a couple of ways, theoretic ways. Two of them involve taxes, all right? So one of them is kind of like a put up or shut up tax, which is, you don't want development, but you want us to pay for it, but we don't have enough money, so just tax every Peters Township resident a flat rate. Some of us will be fine with it, some of us won't, so that's one of those, you got to have a question mark. The other way is, what if we were able to prepay our taxes for X amount of years? So if I could say, you know what, I'm for this, so I'm going to prepay my taxes, and you'll have a big influx of money by a lot of people that can prepay their taxes, and then you'll be able to distribute money to the people or the pieces of property where you don't want to be developed. The third way, which is going to sound funny at first, but let me explain, is busing. So I don't know how many of you drop your kids off at school, which the answer is, most of you do. And if you watch the buses that let off, they let off very few kids. So why don't we stop busing? That's a huge budget number. So somebody's going to say, well, somebody's going to want their kids dropped off, and you say, okay, but they really, it works in Mount Lebanon, you move to Mount Lebanon, you know you're not getting your kid bussed, and I'm not trying to compare us to Mount Lebanon, because I think we have a lot more going on than they do, but with enough notice years in advance, saying at 2026, we're no longer busing, people figure it out. They figure out how to get their kids to school without that bus. So that's just kind of my insight on, not necessarily halting, you know, complete stop of development, but trying to make it more advantageous for people not to sell their land, so that we can, you know, be more along the lines of what most of us moved to Peters for to begin with, although the growth has been great, and the academics and the influx of money and the police force and everything has all been great for the community, but you have to sit there and balance that with how much is enough. And so some of that stuff, you're sitting there going like, well, you can't. Well, you actually can. I mean, they make amendments to the federal law all the time, and it's not easy to do, but you can amend bylaws. And so it takes some lawyering and different things, but you can make amendments, so that if it does seem reasonable to anybody, it's more just like a thought-provoking type of discussion, more than me sitting here telling you guys, don't let Simmons sell their farm, pay him a whole bunch of money, and get it from the taxes. It's more just a thought-provoking thing, that it can be done if people want to look at it that way.
I'll comment, because I have some knowledge of the school bus situation, is you cannot do that. The state, and for the safety of the kids, is obligated to have buses sufficient to be able to evacuate the school.
So then how does Mount Lebanon do it?
Because everybody walks.
The reason, well, and the reason you can walk in Mount Lebanon is that you have, there's standards for safe walking to schools, and, you know, in terms of sidewalks and things like that, and Peters Township just doesn't have that kind of connection to its school buildings, so busing's required.
Okay, I mean, that was just one of the things that I...
Right, I realize, and I can't answer the others because they're a little bit...
Vince, on the other two, right, the prepaying the taxes, like for that three, four, I would do that, to help halt the, but how would the farmers then get the money?
Well, so first of all, there's, you know, bean counters, actuaries, that they could figure out how much it would cost, depending on what size of land you wanted to offer it to people. And then you would, I don't know, I mean, you guys come up with a number, is it, you know, $100 an acre, $1,000 an acre, you know, whatever that number would be, you balance that by how much you think you could raise, by people either paying a flat tax or prepaying their taxes, and then you can kind of come up with that number, where we're not necessarily losing money or making money, it's just kind of, whatever that tax would be, would be whatever we could offer them, type of thing. I mean, it's just kind of one of those ways. The flat tax is obviously easier, you have, how many residents are here? You can figure out the number, you then know exactly how much money you're going to get, and then you could be able to then offer them per acre, or whatever you all decide to do, but that was just kind of the ways to do it. I mean, the prepaying the taxes technically is very beneficial to people, because, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but taxes have ever gone down? No?
I think the township one did years back.
So, I mean, if it did, it's an isolated incident, and so by prepaying them, you're keeping, you know, your same tax rate, and assuming that they're going to go up, and maybe it stays the same. So it's just a, it's not, it's just a way to get an influx of money, to be able to then offer it to those pieces of property for not selling. That's all I meant by it.
John, do you know if we even have...
Were you having any conversation? Well, hey, wait a minute. In 2013, I attended a comprehensive planning meeting...
Ms. Shanner, come up, you have to come to a microphone so that...
Well, I attended a comprehensive planning meeting, and what, now, come on, we paid, what, $35,000 for those consultants to come in here, and what did they tell us? You were, you, most of you were here, except, okay? So, yeah, and they told us we had to put in more single-family dwellings, okay? This is what I've been saying all along, okay? I'll accept that they can't be affordable, but they have to be single-family dwellings, okay? Or we're going to be in Big Doo Doo, they said. That's what one of the guys told me, because of our tax base. Now, that's what they said. Now, I'm sorry, I don't want to be paying for the farmers to keep their land, okay? I don't want to do that, all right? I'm a senior citizen. You pay my share. You want to pay my share, you pay my share.
It's one man's opinion, I'm just saying that if everybody's against the growth in the Frobys, he's offering ideas.
Well, because I'll go out, and listen, I will go out and do a poll.
Okay, but you're different.
Yeah, I will go out and do a poll and see if we all agree with that.
My first comment was stop the plan, right?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Rens, wasn't that your first comment?
Yeah.
Right, so I think all Mr. Reppey was saying was, everybody says stop the plan. So the simplest thing, what Mr. Reppey said first, is write a check. Write a check. Now, most people can't write a check for eight million dollars, so he was providing another alternative. You don't have to like it.
And I'm not saying that everybody wants to stop development, but if you're not going to stop development, then people are going to sell their land.
Well, we're supposed to be having another comprehensive plan, planning thing, too, right? I didn't miss that, did I?
No, you didn't miss that.
Okay, all right.
So, yeah, I agree, I mean, I've been on council for two years now, I think it's the first time that someone's come up and offered some solutions. So thank you, Dr. Reppey, for giving us some ideas.
I just wanted to clarify one thing, I said stop the plan. My only concern on this whole thing was the quarter acre lots. I really, my main is not to stop the plan, but let's get back to residential quarter acre, three, or half acre, three-quarter acre, nice residential lots, not these tight little stacked-on-top-each-other-houses. That was my correction.
Thank you. John, do you know, do we even have the authority, if we wanted to allow people to prepay real estate taxes, because I know the county doesn't, because I remember a few years ago when the Trump tax cuts went into effect, and you can no longer deduct...
We have no authority to do that.
Okay, I was just curious, because I remember people were trying to prepay their county taxes like three or four years ago, before that, not before the deduction went away, and the county wasn't accepting them, so I don't know whether we even have that authority.
The tax duplicate is set each year, and you, it's on the basis of that annual tax duplicate that the property taxes are levied by the county, school district, and the township, so you can't prepay.
Anybody else want to speak?
Just triggered a great thought, Ron McCugan. I'll get you the money. Thomas Road, okay? Lived out here for, I don't know, 30 years. That road was never paved, and I mean, you just hobbled over for all those years, and then, I don't know, God shined a light, and the road was paved, it was fantastic. I'm like, boy, these people with these million-dollar homes have a nice road to drive, fantastic, right? And then sewage company comes in and tears up the road, and now it's a piece of garbage you get, right? So now we have to wait, as a driver, and I'm a rideshare driver on occasion, got to wait until they repaved the road. My sister, who happens to live in Australia, said, came up with a law. All the utility companies have to talk to each other, because they can't touch that road until everybody knows who's going to be doing what to the road before you pay them. In other words, if they would have done the sewage three years ago, or called the paving company and said, wait, we're going to come in and do the sewer line, then we're not wasting the money, right? Somebody's got to pay to repave that road that was just paved three years ago, maybe? Two years ago? So that's, that's all I'm saying. That's the kind of stuff that, as a taxpayer, you see it, you notice it, and you go, something's not right here. They just paved the road, and they just chewed it up.
Mr. Lauer, this is...
Just to correct one thing, and it's a minor thing, it's, this is not the sanitary authority that's doing this, this is the water company that's doing this. So what will occur on that road, because the requirements of the state of Pennsylvania, they will go back and have to mill that road and restore it, either, depending on whether they've crossed both lanes or one lane, they'll have to restore that entire lane, so it'll be put back in the condition it was prior to them doing the work. You know, one of the things that we try to do, and Mr. Zamitis, the township manager here, is always good about this, and now it's a formal policy of the township, we reach out to the utility companies every year with our road paving program, so that they know what we're doing, and we meet with them to make sure that their work is done ahead of our work. So like, if you're familiar with Maplewood, a couple of years ago, that road was in terrible condition, and just as we began to do work there, the water company came in, the project was put on hold, they moved ahead of us, and now that road's been put in and not chewed up because of a utility thing. So we attempt to do that as best we can. That project over there is a PennDOT Water Company project, so that's what's happening up here on East McMurray, that's a PennDOT Water and Water Company project.
One last thing regarding that, because somebody did say, well, some roads are state roads, I get it, okay? You know what I would do if I was county commissioner, or if I was running this county? I'd pave the road and send the bill to Shapiro, because you know what, I ain't waiting 10 years for the road to get paved. I mean, that's just crazy, that we have a thriving community, and you got to wait until PennDOT decides they want to come out and pave your road? Not doing it. And hey, all you can do is try it. I mean, take a small road, send them the bill. I mean, it's just, I think it's ludicrous to just wait. I'd love to know, how many times, the last time before this was paved, you know, how long ago it was? I know it was in a long time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rens. Anybody else wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Evan, I live at 101 Meredith, up at top of Peterswood Park. I had two questions, the first of which was, with Peterswood Park itself, you know, I'm one of the six young families that live up there at the top. I think we are probably the only ones that use the park road, come down into McMurray or make our way over to 19.
condition, and just as we began to, to do work there, the water company came in, the project was put on hold, they moved ahead of us, and now that road's been put in and not chewed up because of a utility thing. So we, we attempt to do that as best we can. That project over there is a PennDOT Water Company project, so that's what's happening up here on East McMurray, that's a PennDOT Water and Water Company project.
One last thing regarding that, because somebody did say, well, some roads are state roads, I get it, okay. You know what I would do if I was county commissioner, or if I was running this county? I'd pave the road and send the bill to Shapiro, because you know what, I ain't waiting ten years for the road to get paved. I mean, that's just crazy, that we have a thriving community, and you got to wait until PennDOT decides they want to come out and pave your road? Not doing it. And hey, all you can do is try it. I mean, take a small road, send them the bill. I mean, it's just, I think it's ludicrous to just wait. I'd love to know the how many times, the last time before this was paved, you know, how long ago it was? I know it was in a long, a long time. So, thank you, Mr. Renn.
Anybody else wish to speak?
Hello, I'm Evan, I live at 101 Meredith, up at top of Peterswood Park. I had two questions, the first of which was, with Peterswood Park itself, you know, I'm one of the six young families that live up there at the top. I think we are probably the only ones that use the park road, come down into McMurray or make our way over to 19, think Oak Ridge, a lot of those people use Bevau or Valleybrook. Was just wondering if there's any discussion about either sidewalks in the park or being able to handle that type of traffic once the development does go in.
Are the parks specific?
Well, in the park itself, there are, right now, there currently aren't plans to put sidewalks in there, that's certainly something that can be considered. Right now, as of right now, there are no plans for sidewalks in the park.
Yeah, because that would be wonderful, I mean, walking my kids either from one playground down to the fields or in between the playgrounds, I mean, there's not much space to walk down. The other question is, and it's probably just because I didn't have enough time to look into it, but what was the latest with the DEP? And I saw the developer put in new plans, and what was the difference, and what's going on on that front?
Okay, so lots happened in one week's time.
Is that going to be taken care of in Agenda A? I just didn't see it there, so.
Do you want me to go through?
Go ahead, Mr. Lauer.
So, as, as you know, last Monday, Peter Township Council rejected the plan because the plan on its, the plan of existing conditions did not show wells that DEP said were there, nor did the site plan have the required setbacks. On Tuesday, DEP got ahold of us and said, our, our information is in error, they went back and checked, and there are no wells on that site. On Wednesday, the developer came back in with a new set of plans and a new filing. On Wednesday, we were also informed, as a result of someone who had contacted Mr. Steigel, that there is physically a well on that site that can be seen. We went out, verified that that well location is there. Today, we met with DEP on site to verify that, in fact, what we were looking at was a gas well. They, they have confirmed that, they're going to go back and research to determine the history, history of that, so.
Where, where was that?
It's on the far end of the property, if you go back on the far end of the property, if you follow out the.
Pipeline?
The pipeline, there's a creek in the back as it gets close to scenic valley, it's on the left-hand side. So, so as a result of that, what will have to happen is the plan, as it's submitted, would have to be modified so that there would not be any lots within 200 feet of that.
And is that what the new plan was?
Well, it isn't, but, but the developer has, because the, the way this whole process works is plans get submitted, they get reviewed first by the staff as well as our outside consultants, and then when deficiencies are shown, the developer has a right to be able to correct those. So, I'll be honest with you, I don't know that the developer right now knows that that well is there, they will know that shortly, because they'll get our review, not only on that, but everything else in that plan, and then they'll have an opportunity to correct that. And you could correct that by simply eliminating the lots that are within 200 feet of that, or I think you can also do it by committing that that phase will not be approved with those lots unless that, that well has been capped. So that's kind of where it is right now.
Gotcha. Well, thanks for looking into that and walking down that.
Oh, it's been, it's been an interesting week.
Yeah, sure.
You were all supposed, supposed to look into the rezoning of that property?
Well, that's on tonight's agenda.
Okay, is that what the A was?
Anyone else want to speak on a non-agenda item? All right, so we'll move into unfinished business, of which there is none, so we'll move into new business. First item, set a date for a public hearing for an ordinance amending the Peter Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, zoning section 400, district classification.
As requested by council, we've initiated a process required for rezoning of multiple parcels. These parcels include parcels that are located at 490 and 555 Sugar Camp Road, as well as the parcels located at 231 Frobeys Road. The effect of the change would be to remove these parcels from the Conservation Residential Overlay, Overlay Zoning District. The process has been initiated by the Planning Commission at their meeting on December 14. If approved, this will, what they made was a recommendation to the Peter Township Council to adopt the ordinance changing the zoning map. So what's in front of council tonight is whether you want to accept that recommendation, and if so, setting the date for a hearing on that rezoning. And it's going to be my recommendation, Peter Township set Monday, January 22, 2024, as a date for a public hearing to amend the Peter Township Code of Ordinances, Chapter 440, and specifically the, the current township zoning map, and that that ordinance, as presented tonight, is designated by council as having pending ordinance status. But just to clarify, because I, I think it's important that residents understand this, that by refiling that plan as they have, that plan moves forward under the existing zoning for that property, unless, in fact, at some point in time, council deems that it's, that it doesn't meet the ordinance, so.
It's complicated.
It's complicated.
Any comments from council?
Did the Planning Committee hear this? Don't they have to make a recommendation?
The Planning Commission has reviewed this, is recommending that council adopt that ordinance instead of hearing on January 22.
I'm going to make a motion that we accept that recommendation, that we schedule a public hearing in the matter for January 22, 2024.
And that the matter is establishing, it is a pending.
Yes.
Status.
The council seeks pending ordinance status for this, that it would be effective upon advertising.
When are we going to do that?
Twenty eighth.
Of this one?
All right. Excuse me, twenty fourth, I'm sorry.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? On favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, request to modify traffic controls in different sections of Barnet Street and Westberry Drive.
Mrs. Murphy has requested that we table this, and that she would like to come back at a future date to discuss this.
You need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we table.
Motion, a second, on favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, ordinance levying a tax on the assessed value of real property located in Peter Township for 2024.
So, as discussed at the budget workshops, the 2024 Township operating budget does not require an increase in property tax levy. The proposed ordinance sets the 2024 property tax levy at 20.7 mils.
So moved.
Second, motion, a second, any discussion? On favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, ordinance adopting the 2024 Peter Township operating budget.
So, in front of you tonight is the budget for 2024. We certainly have spent considerable amount of time developing that budget with council, and it's, the, the thing that are contained within the budget that I find to be significant is that there are a number of park improvements, and to a large extent, those improvements are facilitated by the receipt of a substantial amount of grants. In addition, the other substantial change is the hiring of two additional firefighters, as well as a full-time administrative assistant. It's my recommendation that council adopt ordinance 899, established in the 2024 Peter Township operating budget.
So, a second, motion, a second, any discussion? On favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Six one, Mr. Lauer. Next item, ordinance adopting the 2024 to 2028 Peter Township Capital Improvement Program.
The Home Rule Charter states that the manager is to prepare and submit a five-year capital improvement program. That has been done. That program comes out of a number of cleaning documents that, that have been adopted by council. It also comes out of requests from Department Head of Ivory Boarding Council itself. Included in your docket is a list of, of the projects that are being funded next year. Again, the most significant of which are three projects in the park, the Rolling Hills Aquatic Facility Phase One, which is a splash pad, improvements to Rolling Hills Park, which are a, an area that extends the road at the top of the hill to provide for pickleball, a dog park, deck hockey area, and then improvements to Peter's Wood Park Fields One and Two. And again, at least in the case of the, the Aquatic Center and the Peter, Peterswood Fields, those are being funded largely with money that has been received in the form of grants, so.
Impol, just so that the audience, anybody paying attention, is interested, adopting this plan, similar to the budget, it's no guarantee that any of these projects are going to move forward.
No.
It's simply laying out a roadmap.
Right.
If we did.
Because each and every one of the, particularly on the capital side, each and every one of these projects requires some form of competitive bidding, whether it be through a cooperative purchasing program or sealed bids, all of those need to be awarded by council, so the individual projects will get the say.
All right, someone want to make a motion?
I move, we adopt ordinance number 900, establishing the 2428 Capital Improvement Plan.
Second, motion, a second, on favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, say nay. Seven zero, Mr. Lauer. Next item, discussion concerning the design of the proposed splash pad.
So, Mr. Brooks is here tonight, and we wanted to go, just as we did with the Rolling Hills Phase Two project, to, to go over this with council to make sure that we're on the right track. So what you see in front of you is what Phase One of the aquatic center would look like. It has parking for over a hundred cars, it has two splash pad areas, and it has a support building to support those. The thing that's somewhat unique about the splash pad, and one of the things that we have observed, having gone out and looked at a number of these, it separates the toddlers from the other users. At other splash pads we've been to, the toddlers are competing with kids that are much older, and I think it creates a conflict. This is a rendering of what the splash pad would look like for, for the older kids. It has a wet play structure that, on it, which is unique, we haven't seen that in other splash pads in, in the area. It has the kind of things that we see in splash pads that, that the kids seem to like, things that where you can shoot water back and forth at each other, it's got a large bucket that dumps water on some regular cycle, so. Let's just look at that from a different direction. And then, this is the area here that would be for the, the younger kids, so it's much lower, it has things where kids can, you know, that, what this is, is a place where water flows through this, and you can put little boats and things like that, but it's designed for toddlers. And I guess the last thing before, if you've got any questions for, for Dave, because he has the comments from the Park and Rec Ford. All of this is being designed around what was the original plan, so that, in fact, at some point in the future, the community and council wishes to move forward with the pool, you'll be able to accommodate, accommodate that, so.
And the plan will be for this to be open, what, May 1st to September 30th, or?
Oh, I wouldn't, I think you're not going to see this this year.
No, no, I mean, when it's built, I mean, not.
Oh, I think it's opened.
You're looking Memorial Day through, through Labor Day, a little bit, a little bit later.
Yeah, it's, you know, the thing with this is, if you had a warm spring, you could, you could bring this online easily. The, the great thing about the way this is designed, I believe, is that because of the nature of what's being done here, this does not require a lifeguard, this only requires two attendants, so it should be easy to bring it online and leave it open as early as it can be and as late as it can be. So you might get in to September and still have, have weekends where you're opening up the, the spray party.
Questions from council?
Have we concluded, or have we even talked about whether this is admission charged, or is it open to the public without cost? I don't know that we have.
We haven't got to that detail yet.
That's going to be something, that's a discussion the council's going to have to have. You know, the thing about it is, given the way the site is laid out, and, and, and I don't know.
I mean, I don't know how we can charge for that, I mean, if, one thing, if it wasn't the Aquatic Center.
Membership.
You could charge for that, but this, I mean, this is more like, you know, you got to, one of your kids is doing something over at the school or something, you need a place to take your little kid to kill an hour or something, you take him over there.
But the other side of it would be.
Well, if you rent one of those rooms and you want to have a birthday party, I think there'd be a fee for that, but, I mean, my recollection was, and this is originally proposed and way back, the whole thing, that this is going to be something that people could just show up and turn on and use. I mean, there wasn't going to really be a lot of supervision.
There has to be employees there, because, I don't, what do you think of Dave? I mean, you've got shelters.
There's definitely going to need to be employees there controlling, and there still has to be testing of some of the water, so you have to have some employees there, minimal compared to a swimming pool. It is going to be a fenced area, controlled area around the perimeter there. Revenue-wise, you're looking at, you have a party room in the, in the building structure, then you have two large pavilions that you run out for birthday parties, so I, I think that's the revenue side of it. I know there are discussions about a fee if it's a non-resident, if, if we set fees for people to enter that area, but I, I think it needs to be a controlled area. There still is water concerns and safety concerns, so it is going to be fenced, and we'll be able to lock that area and close that area if needed.
Oh, yeah, you have to be able to close it at night, too.
Right, right.
Okay.
Is there a map that shows where this is relative to the existing plateau with Shelter HGC?
It's not below. If, if you're up on the hard shelter looking down, you see that large grayed-in area, that's this.
It's, that's part of it. This is part of that flat area.
Two questions on any ideal and estimated cost, and then, second question would be, how much then would that save us moving forward, putting it up?
We don't know the answer to that yet, because until we're able to tell the architect that this is the direction we're going, that's when they're going to begin to develop, play into the point where you're going to be able to get costs. I think this is going to be well under the amount of money that's available, but I've been surprised before here.
You're talking about the grant money?
Yes.
Who's the architect?
Kimble Burro Gatz.
Did we use that for the pool?
Yes.
Do we have to rebid that?
Oh, yes. Well, what we're going to do is, the equipment is actually available through CoStar, so we're either going to acquire the equipment ourselves and, and have a contractor install it, or we're going to make it part of the, of the bid package, but I'm, I'm leaning towards wanting to, to use CoStar so that we can control what equipment we're getting there.
I, I think my question was, do we have to use this architect?
No.
Well, I wasn't happy with the way they, they, they made it, because, you know, they made it in such a way, when they designed the, the original stuff, that you had to do the whole project at one time, you couldn't piecemeal it, because it was all connected. Now, whose benefit was that to? That, that's my problem.
But you, you want to continue to use the, this architect, if not, you're going to, you're going to spend, because the, if you look at this, the way, what is laid out there in terms of the parking lots and bringing utilities in and all that, that work's all been done, and so this is going to be easy to get this thing back out the bid, and if, if we get somebody else, we're going to start all over with that, and you're going to pay twice to do all that engineering.
Any other questions or comments from council?
I just looked at, I just looked at this picture, and the one I'm looking at shows a whole bunch of willow trees, and you certainly do not want them around the.
It'll suck up the extra water.
Well, there's leaves that will be in the, leaves in the.
Yeah, right.
In the water all day.
The building won't be that high either. The building won't be that high either. It'll be a one-story building.
Yeah.
That was a question from the, one of the Parks and Rec member, uh, board members, was the, the shade and, and the building being in the way of the parking area to be able to view, uh, the splash pad area. Um, the way it's laid out, I really like the layout, and how it controls the flow of people in, into the splash pad in one area. Um, so that, that building where it's laid out on the, on the concept, I think is in a good spot. The only other major question that the Parks and Rec Board had was capacity. Um, reached out this morning to Vortex. Capacity for this area for, it's about eighty-nine hundred square feet, is, is 250 people in the wet area. Um, in the entire area, um, it's a lot, lot larger, but in the wet areas, we can get 250, 250 kids in that area, which is a, a really good number.
You don't need a motion or anything?
Nope.
We just want to be able to move ahead.
All right. All right, next item, award of a contract for a Caterpillar 926 14A wheel loader through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program.
So the, uh, 2024 budget includes an appropriation of $230,000 to acquire a replacement for the wheel loader. Um, the, uh, current wheel loader that we use is a 2014 John Deere. Um, this piece is essential particularly for, um, winter operations, so, um, uh, we'd like to go ahead and have council award this bid tonight under the CoStarz program to, um, uh, Cleveland Brothers in an amount of $225,292. That's $4,708 below the amount that's in the, that's currently in the budget, uh, that you just adopted. The reason why you'd want to do that is two reasons. One, the price is going up on January 1st, and two, it's not clear when this piece of equipment will be available, even if it's ordered down.
What are we doing with the old one?
Um, we're gonna probably sell it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that, uh, we award a contract for the purchase of a Caterpillar 926 14A wheel loader with accessories through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program to Cleveland Brothers Inc. in the amount of $225,292.
No, I'll second that.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Next item, award of a contract for a Caterpillar 289 compact truck loader through the CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program.
And again, this is in the 2024 budget, it has an appropriation of $140,000 to acquire the, uh, compact truck loader with accessories, including that, that cold planer, uh, that's shown there, uh, in the picture. It's the recommendation of, of Mr. Scott, uh, to acquire this under the, uh, CoStarz program. The price for the loader is $137,300.
I'll make a motion that we award a contract for the purchase of a Cat 289 compact truck loader with accessories through CoStarz Cooperative Purchasing Program to Cleveland Brothers Inc. in the amount of $137,300.
Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Action on existing contract for the purchase of a truck. Mr. Lauer?
So, last year at this time, on the 22nd of December, uh, Peter Township Council awarded a contract to Kenworth of Pennsylvania for the purchase of a large truck. And, um, what we were told at that time is that truck would take 18 months before it would arrive here. Mr. Scott, uh, contacted, uh, Kenworth to find out how that was moving along the, uh, production schedule, only to find out from, from, uh, the representative from Kenworth that the truck was never ordered. And so, um, uh, the, what Kenworth has, uh, suggested is one of two solutions. One solution is to amend the contract to accommodate a higher price for, for a truck that would be ordered now, or to cancel the contract. And Mr. Scott and I are both of the opinion that, that the appropriate thing is to cancel the contract.
Is their price gonna be cheaper, even at the amended price?
Well, I was gonna say, and, and one of the reasons why Mr. Scott comes to that conclusion is, um, he does not, you know, these, we moved to these Kenworths when, when the prior Public Works Director was here. Mr. Scott does not believe that that has served us well, and he would like to go back to the international trucks that we had before, which we can actually acquire in at a lower price.
And I have another question. If, if we cancel the contract, I noticed in your little memorandum that, uh, we'd have to cancel a contract with another vendor-
Yes.
-for, that was gonna upfit and retrofit or whatever is that truck. Is, is that gonna have any consequence as far as, like, them suing us?
I have not entered in the discussion with Stevenson Equipment, but we've worked with Stevenson so much that I, I don't think that's gonna be a problem, so. But we're gonna reach out to them and have a discussion with them.
I'll make a motion that we can, we cancel the contract and proceed to order a similar truck from another vendor.
Whose job was it to order the truck?
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah, uh, there's a signed contract from their representative. Uh, they actually came down to talk to us about that, and it would have been the, uh, Kenworth of Pennsylvania, it's a, it's a dealership in Somerset, it would have been the, um, the manager of that, of that installation, so.
So someone from Peter Township ordered the truck?
Oh, there's a contract that's signed-
There's a signed contract.
By, by both sides. That's my point to them. What, what they told me was, we, you never gave a, gave us authorization to do it, and my point to them is, you have a signed contract, that you received on, uh, right after, uh, council's meeting, and they, they did not proceed to order the truck.
And Kenworth executed that contract as well?
Yeah.
It just wasn't executed on our-
If they made a mistake, they, they just dropped it for-
We're confident we can get the same truck for a lower price.
Yeah, not the same truck.
You can get it for less than a Kenworth.
Okay, then fine, then. Just make sure that when we place that order, that, that you call them a week later and say, "You got it, and you've ordered it."
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion in the second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. Payroll and bills.
Dr. Ross, give us a review of payrolls and bills, all things good standing order. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Motion in the second. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. 7-0, Mr. Lauer. No correspondence. Ms. Lauer? No one wants to discuss any of the reports?
Well, I think we should note that the firefighter of the year, Stunt, don't you think that'd be-
Should've done it earlier.
We'll let Gary do that.
No, I didn't.
You don't want to? Well, it says, according to this, that the Fire Department banquet, that firefighter of the year was Dennis, is it Paletti?
Yes.
And, um, fire officer of the year, Chris Chippage, and ironman of the year, Sean Walters. Should give him a little plug.
Hey, there's been two guys sitting in the back of this room for a long time.
Not done yet.
Well, we could've done that a lot earlier, and they wouldn't have-
See if they're gonna stick it out till the end, so. So, go ahead, Bob. This is your-
No, you took the card away from me. Take it.
The, uh, young man in the scout, the uniform, can you come forth, please?
I warned him of that.
Hello.
Hi. Can you introduce yourself? Tell us which, uh, trip you're with and why you're here.
I'm Tommy Gallagher. I go to the Peter Township High School. I'm a senior. I'm with Trip 1313. I am working towards my Eagle Scout badge, and in doing that, I need to observe a council meeting, so I am here doing-
We were right leaving you to the end, uh, so you could get the full benefit of the program. Yeah. Excitement that happens here every other two, every other month, yeah.
Do you, I need to sign this paper.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
He needs to sign in, otherwise his name will not be in the minutes.
Typically, Mr. Lewis has some questions for, uh-
Are you, are you committed to a project for your Eagle badge?
I have already completed my project. I planted 139 trees at Peter Township High School. It's in, like, a field below the municipality road, between that road and the main road going past the school.
Wentworth.
Yeah, basically.
And what did you do to prevent the deer from eating them as fast as you planted them?
The tree species that are there, the deer don't particularly like those. There wasn't any specific things to prevent the deer from eating them, like any fencing or wiring, but the school said they would take care of that and deal with any consequences of it.
Well, we thank you very much for your efforts.
Really appreciate it.
Good job.
Thanks for sticking out all the way-
You got any other people that are looking for projects? I'm sure we could plant some trees in some of the other parks.
And you have to tell us what kind of species you planted that the deer will eat.
Uh, there was 80, no, not 80, 79 sycamore and 69 silver maple. That's correct.
Great.
Both very good for a white area.